There we go, there we go, there we go, there we go, there we go.
That is it?
I'd like to call the
Presentation audio, everything is open.
Why are we hearing that going still?
Technology is great.
Yeah, news system. Yeah, turn yourself off.
Roll call will show that Commissioner Lenzmeyer, Commissioner Bertram, Commissioner Clark is absent. Commissioner Persky is here and Commissioner Notch is here and not feeling so bad.
Mr. Chair, we are trying to bring Commissioner Clark in but having technical difficulties.
Oh, okay.
If that happens, I will let you know.
If Commissioner Clark can attend, that would be good. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, the first item is the approval of the agenda. After looking at the agenda, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I have a motion and second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item is consent. Members, you have items one through nine on the consent agenda. Are there any items in which somebody would like to take off the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we remove item four.
Number four? Any other items to take off the agenda? Any other items? Okay, if not, I'll look for a motion to approve items one through nine with the exception of four.
So moved. So moved.
Commissioner Notch, motion to approve?
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner Bertram. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, Commissioner Bertram, what would you like to do with number four?
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Williams and Commissioners, I'd like to have an overall discussion on the hazardous waste facility, hours, the current hours of operation, the mobile unit within Stearns County dates that we're using that mobile unit. So maybe I'd suggest that we do this item along with that discussion at maybe at the next meeting. I know the agreement was supposed to be signed like two, over two months ago anyway, so another two weeks probably won't hurt anything.
Okay.
We could probably just have an overall discussion.
Well, let's move on to environmental services and, and let's, yeah, we can put that on hold and we can talk about what we want to do maybe there. I got some suggestions as well. Can we do that?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll, should we not, then, what would you suggest? Should we not approve, approve that then? Should we just leave it as is or wait, we're bringing it up at that time?
I would bring, my suggestion would be bring it all up at one time at a future meeting that we can talk about the whole hazardous waste program.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bertram, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Notch.
Oh, I was just gonna say, Mr. Chairman, we have Shelley.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think it's perfectly fine that we discuss the whole program. Let's make sure that there's not a time issue with getting this document approved. I don't, and I don't know that approving this would prevent us from making changes to the program, but that's what I just wanted to make sure as long as we have.
So anyway, motion passes except for number, number four, and we'll move on to environmental services. And Shelley, that's actually in your court right now.
It is, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. Just to address that issue, I do have Mark Lateral here who is the supervisor over environmental health, and I'll let him address the issue of the agreement.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Commissioner Bertram, regarding your concern over this agreement, we would be more than happy to come back and have a larger discussion regarding HHW and our activities and what we have accomplished and where we're going with the board at a future meeting. Signing this agreement today or approving this agreement to be signed today really has, I don't see it having impact on that discussion as Mr. Williams indicated. It would be good to have this agreement in place as Commissioner Bertram mentioned. If the hopes were to have this done two and a half months ago, you know, looking at last November, December, they were promising to get us this, this model agreement in. They were still negotiating it. They finally got to the terms of negotiation and getting this out. In addition to this agreement, we also have a paint care agreement that we're waiting on that will be coming to the board for approval as well. We don't have that yet, so if I can make a recommendation, my recommendation is to ask this board to, to approve the signing of this agreement so we can have this in place so it doesn't affect the funding or the functionality of our program as we have it today.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mark, you know, somebody else's bad timing isn't our problem. And so PCA is not getting you something, it just seems to me to make more sense. If they're not getting you now this second agreement, why don't we just get, tell them you need it by two weeks and then let's talk about this. I have not, I did ask questions about this. I got no response, so I don't feel comfortable approving this and then potentially now another agreement with PCA without knowing the big picture. So I won't support signing this because again, let's have the discussion that I was kind of, and it was inferred that there was going to be a discussion about this in November about the hazardous waste program. And I kind of was watching the meetings after the election. I never saw anything, so that's just, it doesn't hurt. Again, we're two plus months late, PCA is not getting you the stuff, I think no harm in waiting a couple of weeks. But I, I won't support approving it because I don't know enough about it.
Yep, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, if there's no risk, if we're not going to lose any funding or anything like that, 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 if delay doesn't do anything like that, Mark, then I don't see any problem with it.
But I can't say a hundred percent that it won't affect our funding. Ideally, it would have been put in place like, like we said, it would just seamless transition from the past to the forward. They've, the PCA have said they, they would bridge the gap that we've already experienced and not have it financially affect us. But once we had them available, it was, the idea was to have them approved as soon as possible.
I guess my concern is that this is something I wanted to talk about a good, a good number of years ago. But it seems like, good Lord, we got so much on our plate always that we never get around to doing and always looking, well, we'll, we'll take care of it. We'll take care of it, we'll take care of it. Well, now we have a deadline for a, an agreement. And, you know, I'm, I'm thinking, gosh, we should have taken care of it before we renew this agreement. One thing I'm concerned about is the other counties. We have Sherburne County involved, we got Benton County involved, we got Malax County involved. And I, I think they may have some needs or they may have some concerns too I'd like to hear about from them. Because I think we can perhaps do a better job with meeting the, the needs of their county residents in, in different ways, either by something we do or by something they do. There's no question about those hazardous waste materials that are out there. And by, and by all means, we want to make sure that, you know, we can take care of as much of those as possible that we can. We have the funds to do that. Whenever anybody walks out of the, the store, whether it be Fleet Farm, Menards, Home Depot or whatever, they pay that additional paint fee every time they buy a can of paint. But I know just, I'm on my soapbox, I'm on my paint can talking now. And, you know, that, that paint can sits in the garage and they say, well, oh, I'm going to take it in, I'm going to take it in. Well, after it's been there six months and it's collection day for the garbage, somebody else in the house sneaks it in that can and it can go away, you know, down the street instead of going, getting turned in. And, and again, people want to, want to be good stewards, but we have to make it convenient and give them the opportunities to do that. So I'd like to take a look at the big picture of how we're doing that and how we can improve things because I think we can do a better job and I think our community wants to do a better job. So anyway, that's, that's me talking on my paint can.
Mr. Chair, but I'm just thinking the hours of operation and stuff like that is something we would set, which I don't think this agreement really would infringe on.
Agreed, Commissioner Notch. The only thing is, is it possible that some of the other counties might actually want to take it on themselves? I don't know if they've had that opportunity to, to do that. And they, if, if we're binding with them in the, in the agreement, maybe it's something they'd like to do. Because thinking that, you know, coming from Malax County, the only way they can get rid of it is if they don't bring all the way to Way Park. That's a heck of a journey for those folks in Malax County to do. If there's a better means by which they can collect it, I would like to make sure they have that option.
So is that what happens with those other counties? They have the right to bring it here?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Notch, yeah, well, this agreement allows us to operate our facility. We are the regional program authority, it's regional sponsor, so we are the lead county in our group of counties. Benton, Sherburne, Malax, Pope Douglas and Wright Counties. It all allows those residents to come and utilize our facility, okay, under this term. We have separate facility agreements, we have separate mobile agreements with various counties. For instance, Malax, we do do two collections over in Malax each summer with our mobile unit. So we are trying to get out to serve those folks. We do a collection in Benton County in Foley late in the year. We do about fourteen or fifteen collections within Stearns County in our, in our rural areas. That, as, as you mentioned, Commissioner Notch, the hours of operation, our policies, our procedures for the facility, that, that really is a different discussion than what this agreement does. This agreement affords us approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars a year in grant reimbursement revenue. It affords us access to the state contracts that allows us to transfer liability and indemnification of shipping the waste once it leaves our facility, becomes responsible to PCA, not Stearns County. Like I said, it gets us access to the state contracts which allows us a better rate for disposal costs. There's a number of things it does along with letting, allowing us to serve our partner counties. So as Commissioner Notch pointed, it's, it's all related, yes, very much so, but they're really two different conversations. Approving this really doesn't impact the discussion I believe you folks want to have.
Mr. Chairman, just this discussion right now tells me even more so. We should continue this. Questions are being asked by Commissioners that have been here for a long time that we're not aware of. So again, let's look at it from a bigger perspective. Your question is right. I, I have no idea and that wasn't answered. Has Benton County, Sherburne County, we're getting twenty-eight thousand? If we did this different, could we get fifty thousand? We are, that's not a question, it's a, it's a rhetorical. So the point is, the discussion, in my opinion, you've been waiting for it to happen evidently. This is getting brought to us months later. We've got time, in my opinion, in two weeks is not going to, and then let's have a broad discussion and in depth. And then hopefully let's get the information before the meeting about our operational hours, how this contract works, how the other contract works, how do they all, you know, intertwine with each other, is my opinion. Is a motion in order?
Yes, you go ahead.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we do not approve this at this meeting that we do it at the next meeting with a fuller, a broader discussion.
Okay. I've got a motion to, to table or to not approve the, the request for the permit?
Which would be a question, is it more appropriate to table or, or, you know, make a motion if Jeff is proposing or, I'd like some direction. I mean, I, if, if.
Okay, I'll, I'll second the motion so that you can, we can have discussion.
I mean, I just, I think you're talking about what, what's the Roberts rule. So then I, I would suggest what motion was, was in essence to table until the next meeting.
All right.
And I agree.
Comfortable with that?
I agree, yeah, I agree.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Chairman, Mike, with the understanding that we have a very in-depth.
Absolutely, yeah.
What are we doing currently? Let's see the current agreement that we've already signed, whatever, four years ago. What's proposed and then get that other agreement from PCA, tell them we want it in two weeks, we want it at our next meeting.
Okay. Right, now, according to Roberts rule, since I second the motion, we have to have a vote, we have to deny and then come back to table, okay?
No, I can change my motion to table.
It's a motion to table, I think is what we're.
You can take it back.
I'll change my motion to table.
Yeah.
Well, then, then I'll take my second back. All right.
So we don't have.
To table it.
Okay, yes, I agree with your table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mark, while you're there, let me say, I appreciate the good things that you're doing there. We do a lot of good things here in, in Stearns County, you know, and again, I think it's just something, we've had so many other things going on that we haven't had, especially with COVID and, and bringing materials in during COVID in connection with the public that, you know, we didn't get a chance to take a look at that when we should have taken a look at it. So if we can within the next two weeks, let's take a look at that and see maybe how we can do some things a little bit better and have that discussion. I think we can all feel good if we, if, if we're getting those chemicals where they should be going instead of getting them into the ground and into a landfill, so, Shelley?
Mr. Chair, just so you are aware, I will not be at that meeting. I am, will be out of, on leave until April seventeenth.
Okay, okay, thank you. Marky, I know you've got hands on with this. I, I trust your abilities to have a discussion, so thank you.
Mr. Chair, just in response, I have no control over when that paint care agreement hits us. We've been asking for it for months. It's still being negotiated by Paint Care, the company and the PCA. SWA, which is the Solid Waste Administrators Association, is the entity that negotiates these contracts along with their, the identified negotiating team counties and their attorneys vet these contracts. We have no say over negotiating this. There won't be any changes. The contract is, what's coming forth is what we have the opportunity to sign or enter into. The payment mechanism is what it is. It's based on the number of households, all that kind of, so all that information, we can present that. But we don't really have the ability to do any kind of negotiation to get more money out of it.
I think, I think your points were taken. The paint, paint care is different from the way we handle our household hazardous waste. That's different.
We may not have that agreement in two weeks.
I don't, and quote, flat honestly, I don't anticipate it showing up. They're still, they're still negotiating in levels that aren't even close to having it in our hands, unfortunately.
Mr. Chairman, again, questions that you're inferring that you don't have the answer for that we. So what I'd ask, Mike, is, Mark, share the person that you're contacting, that you're communicating with to get that agreement. Share that with Mike and Mike, please share it with me. I'll help, again, we've got state legislators and that'll help get an agreement. Their bad timing isn't our problem. So again, let's talk about this all at one time. I can't believe they won't facilitate it. If they don't, well, then we'll just wait until they do and then we'll talk. And maybe it is better if we don't have in two weeks that Shelley be here, that we can have a broader discussion. Because from what I've been hearing, this has been an ongoing, you know, kind of issue from residents and from Commissioners of wanting to know more about the entire program.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner and, and Mark, I, I don't think that impacts what the discussion we're planning to have at all, so that's, that's fine.
But please get that name of who Mark's talking to and then we'll share it and we'll see if we can jerk that loose.
Okay, anyone else?
What's your expectation, Jeff? Is that person supposed to come to the meeting that we discuss this at or?
I don't think they'd have to come to the meeting, but again, they should get the agreement. And we've all dealt with this at different levels. You know, the city council, when I was on the city council, agencies like that would like to kind of just drag things along and then all of a sudden they needed it right now. Well, again, let's all work together, get everything before us. And I don't know, I, I'd like to see the former agreements that we signed. I haven't even seen what we've signed previously on this one or this paint one. I, I don't know what the options are and your question is really good about the other counties. How do they feel about this? Do they have any input? If we're the regional collection, shouldn't we want to know what Benton, Sherburne and other counties feel or if there's something that we should be doing differently? Because you said, I've been at more cleanups probably than anybody in this room and I've seen it when the mobile unit wasn't very accessible, when they didn't want to come to citywide cleanups on a Saturday. And that took a while to make that happen, but when that wasn't happening, people would show up. You know, we had, we had the, the hazardous waste collection at a church parking lot on the Thursday afternoon at two o'clock. Well, eighty percent of the residents that wanted to access that were working or weren't available. When they would come to a cleanup thinking the hazardous unit would be there and they weren't, we could see the box of hazardous material in the car in the back of the pickup. And of course, they were so disappointed when they didn't have no place to take it and they drove out of that cleanup. We all looked at each other and said, well, where do you think that's going to end up? You know, nobody's going to leave it in the back of their car trunk. Dump it in the dumpster, throw it in the ditch, do something else with it. So again, that whole, what we get reimbursed for, how the hours are, all that is a bigger global discussion because we need to make this convenient, otherwise people aren't going to utilize it. So that's the bigger discussion. And I think it, so the expectation is that PCA person doesn't need to be here. But we all know that there's, you know, a contract or something laying on somebody's desk and they're just not motivated to move on it and then all of a sudden they move on it and then they want us to react and approve it willy-nilly without knowing details on it. And I guess I for one am asking for the details.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
So would that bring up a point of, would it be advisable either annually or every other year I have a, a report given on the volumes, you know, that are brought into household hazardous waste? I, I don't know if we've ever had that at a board meeting?
Commissioner Notch, I, I think that's, an annual review is good. I mean, and that can be part of our discussion.
I, I mean, there's more awareness than not only with us but with the residents that, oh, you know, here's the volume of paint or whatever that's been collected, you know, in, in the household hazardous waste facility or mobile.
Sure, we do have those numbers. I could, I could share with you, actually, it's twenty-one numbers. Twenty-two numbers are still being compiled and going into the score report, but we do have statistics for twenty-one of all those chemicals, paints, light bulbs. We can compare ourselves to other facilities, hours of operation, all that kind of stuff. We can get these comparisons.
Okay, that, that's good stuff. And can, can we get previous years to, to, just, just in numbers, just so that we can say, you know, we have more people participating?
Oh, sure, we can, we can, we can go back. How, how far back would you like?
I don't know.
Three years?
Five years?
I'd say five years.
I mean, if they're simple.
We can show a trend of growing participation.
Yeah, yeah.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Notch, that's a good question. And again, the goal is to keep increasing it because there's more and more chemicals that we're being exposed to. And again, you'd be, it's an eye-opener when you're at a cleanup, what you see people bringing in and them not knowing, you know, that you can't throw that in the garbage and you, and then even them not knowing, well, where can I take it? When can I take it? They're not open or they're not accessible or, so again, those are all the things let's talk about. The goal is to look at those previous numbers and then increase the numbers because again, the, the usage of these products are increasing. More people are using chemicals today than ever before.
And, and Mark, one of the dynamite programs we got going is that reuse store. And I don't know how many people are aware of that because, you know, it gives the opportunity for people to pick up things that they wouldn't have to purchase, people, you know, that, that can't afford to repaint a bedroom or can't afford to, you know, do some work and, and remodel like that. That gives them the opportunity to say, well, that's not such a bad color. My child can live with that. So they pick it up instead of going to the store and spending twenty dollars.
Folks are aware of the restore. I think it's a good mention to, to remind them. Actually, we have, we struggle keeping our stuff on the shelf. So you go out there now, it's going to look pretty empty. You know, the, the few carts a day that we can set out that are good items, we put them out, they disappear by the day's end.
Well.
People know about it, people do use it, so, yeah.
The horse is dead.
All right, we can, we can move on to the next item. Thank you, Mark.
Shelley, you're up.
Mr. Chair, I have Becky Schlorf here to give her program updates.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, board members. I'm giving you an update on the Egg and Water Resources Division programs. And I'll start with the wetland program for 2022. These are the services that we provide through the Wetland Conservation Act. It's mandated by the Board of Water and Soil Resources. And over the years, the numbers kind of fluctuate a little bit, but we are required to report to the state the number of contacts that we have annually. The five-year average is nine hundred and five and in 2022, we had about nine hundred and forty-two. And so these contacts are basically the services provided or requested per property. It's a picture of the workload. It's not the entire workload view, but it's just a picture. One of the more involved aspects or services related to the WACA is violations. And the five-year average is ten violations with eight resolved informally and two involving the DNR. In 2022, we had twenty-three, twenty-three investigations or complaints and seven of those were violations, three did end up involving the DNR. The next slide is regarding the.
Can I, can I ask a question about those violations?
Sure.
Go back to that slide. You see, it has trended downward. Any idea, you know, why we had, was it a matter of enforcement? Was it a matter of changing the statute so that you'd have more violations? Can you have any idea why it was so high before and now the numbers are much lower?
I don't.
Or people complying?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I don't know exactly. I do know that in 2014, the DNR did a flyover and so there were a number of violations discovered as a result of that. So, but yes, it, it's a, it's a trend that we like to see. I don't know the exact reason why that is occurring. Hopefully it's education and people understanding that the rule is in place and has been since nineteen ninety-one.
Okay, thank you.
Wetland replacement plans and banking applications are another large workload related to this program. We, in 2022, we had six wetland replacement plans and one new banking application. We currently have five banking applications in the works. As many of you probably know, those do take years. The credit, the credits in our area are low and expensive. I think the last time I was here, I reported that they're averaging about two dollars per square foot. We did see a project come in this year at two dollars and forty cents per square foot and back in 2014, it was around a dollar per square foot. So the cost of wetland replacement has increased significantly. I'll move on to the feedlot program, starting off with registrations. So if you look on the far right of this slide, you'll see the 2022 numbers. At the very bottom, the two thousand four hundred eighty-four is the number of feedlots active in the county. That includes the state-registered, required registered feedlots as well as those required by our county ordinance or those that we just happened to track because of zoning. So thirteen, almost fourteen hundred of those are required to register by the state and that's how we're funded through our delegation and to implement the state feedlot rules. So over the years, you can see that the, some of these numbers are declining and this trend has continued. So the sites that are smaller and in shoreline or out of shoreline are declining in numbers and the sites that are three hundred animal units or more are increasing. And the sites, obviously, as you can see at the bottom, that we're not funded for are also increasing. So those tend to be the hobby farm type sizes. This is just a graph showing that trend.
Mr. Chairman, Becky, so the sixty-four decrease from 2018 to 2022, do these feedlots simply not renew or do they actively apply or say, we want to stop? How, how do they disappear, those sixty-four?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, we're on a registration. So the state requires registration every four years and so we break it up into pieces. So we are re-registering sites every year, a section of them. So upon registration or re-registration, if they haven't had animals within the last five years, then they fall out of the registration and they're not considered active anymore. So some of it is related to decreasing animal numbers over a period of time. Otherwise, others are just decreasing the animal numbers and so they may fall into the not, no longer funded by the state.
And Mr. Chairman, I guess what I'm really trying to get at is, so I have a feedlot. I maybe have whatever animal units, it's not a big deal and yet I'm registered. Am I notified somehow that you need to re-register or else you're going to lose, you are, okay?
Correct, yes, you are.
I just don't want people to all of a sudden miss something and all of a sudden now can't have two chickens and a pig.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, the only, the only aspect of not being notified would be that less than ten animal units because our ordinance does not require them to register. However, because of parcel size or zoning district, some of those are allowed to have animals or maybe somewhat grandfathered in or legal non-conformity. So we're not contacting them on a regular basis, so those may, just upon complaint. Um, so those may, um, just upon complaint or, or future contact fall out of the, fallout of, um, off the record of active feedlot.
But we are, Mr. Chairman, we are aware of them.
Oh, yes, yep.
Got it.
And we haven't actively inventoried or surveyed them. But when we do have, when we have had a contact over the decades, we are tracking it.
And by the way, Mr. Chairman, can we get this slide presentation, uh, after this? That we can look at it a little bit deeper?
Certainly.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I was just going to comment to Commissioner Bertram. So usually, what is it, every four years? Like I'll get a postcard, you know, that says, what, I'm up for renewal? And then there's usually a format, you know, that you fill out how many animal units you have and stuff like that. And we submit it back to the county.
We don't have, Mr. Chairman, we don't have animals on our farm, so I don't know how that works. So that's helpful, thanks.
Yeah, and actually, Mr. Chair, we send out a pre-populated form even too, based on what they've had on site. So they can easily fill it out or adjust it as needed.
Now, I've got a question. So when, when they let that expire, uh, do they, do they still are allowed to come back in at any time they lawn? If they want to bring those animals back, if that's been an identified acceptable feedlot?
Mr. Chair, it depends on the zoning and the parcel size. There are some restrictions. Otherwise, if it's been past five years without animals, they are basically applying for a new feedlot permit and registration.
Okay, so then that would also apply for a variance then?
If there's not, if there's a setback that's not being met or an animal unit density that's not being met, then they would have to obtain a variance.
So they could be then denied if they would let it expire? But if they would, okay, if they would just go ahead and reapply, does that variance hold true?
Correct, it does.
Okay, that would, you might understand.
And Mr. Chairman, I've told residents all the time, make sure you keep them active, in my opinion. Because again, we both know on the planning commission, uh, the poor family that, uh, the chickens, uh, five chickens and whatever it was. And again, to know, they didn't know. Uh, but I, I tell people, keep your feedlot active because you never know, the next landowner might want a horse or might want some chickens or whatever. And then, because it's going to be harder to reapply, then keep it consistent.
Or for Mr. Chair, somebody, you let it lapse and then somebody builds a home closer, correct? Then now you have an issue, like needing a variance or something to get it reactivated.
Good point, alright.
So, um, moving forward, um, into permits or the permitting side of it. So we do permits for the state as well as our county ordinance. And these, this graph is showing those combined and, and includes the revision permits that we do. So a five-year average is just over 80 permits per year. You can see in 22, that did jump back up, although there was a decrease, a significant decrease over the last couple of years. But we did have eight variances in 2022 and six CUPs. Um, the other thing that I report on annually is the non-compliance. And this slide is showing the non-compliance related to open lot runoff as well as the manure storage areas. Um, so the far right column again is the 2022 numbers. And you can see over time, it continues to decrease. That decrease in the non-compliance, or the increase in non-compliance, I should say even, it is a result in part of funding that's available or not as available. Um, and so in the last few years, the funding sources have been less, as well as the cost of fixes has been more. So we're seeing less, fewer projects, um, get completed for compliance. However, with the Inflation Reduction Act, we are expecting more funds and more projects in the coming years. Um, these projects can sometimes take a couple of years to get engineered and get through, um, the system, so.
So Mr. Chairman, Becky, people aren't complying because they don't have the money to do what needs to be done? Is that what you're saying?
In some cases, yes.
Um, and what can we do? I mean, SCS works with this a lot?
Right, um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, the, um, funding, um, entity tends to be the federal government as well as the state. So people are working with the Soil and Water Conservation District and Natural Resource Conservation Service. Um, and so they also do provide technical, um, help. So when we run across a feedlot that is non-compliant, they can provide assistance with even, um, low cost or no, or not low cost, but low cost, um, fixes and, um, as well as those fun, access to those funding sources.
I think part of the problem or the challenge, Mr. Chairman, is you'd be shocked at how much some of these feedlots cost because of the regulations. I, I, I think whenever there's government assistance, they make it more complicated, they make it more costly. But some of these manure pits, and I'm not talking 1,000 cow herds, I'm talking 50, 100, they'll run $200,000, $300,000, $400,000. I mean, I'm shocked, uh, at how, if there's a way that we can minimize some of that overregulation, uh, to decrease the amount of the cost, people are going to be more likely one to be able to afford it and comply, which is what the end goal is, I think.
And Mr. Chair, I, I think, you know, part of that is it's, it's, there are some higher standards with the cost share just because it's public money, I believe. There's, so they're trying to make sure things are going to actually work and stay and be maintained. Um, but yes, we do have, um, some technical assistance available, especially for open lot fixes that can make it less costly for people. But they also have to find a way to cash flow it.
Yeah, and I think one of the issues over the years that has occurred is as your 50, 100 cow, let's say dairy farms, you know, when they would apply through NRCS, the dollar cost, you know, 75% cost share, the dollar amount to, let's say, put in the lagoon or manure system was lower. Now, when you're dealing with animal units, you know, 300 cow and plus herd, that manure storage structure just became really expensive. So the money is available in that program, you know, to assist have declined dramatically. I mean, I worked with one, they had the barn up and they still didn't have the cost share for the manure pit, which was going to cost them half a million dollars. You know, here they sit, now how do we, how do we dispose of this manure when we don't have a lagoon? So it was like a daily haul all winter long. So, you know, that has been an issue I've seen too, where the funding source to help them, you know, has not really maybe disappeared a lot, but the projects have gotten so expensive that they can do less projects because the money's gone.
And Mr. Chairman, my bigger concern is that 100 cow herd, you know, the big dairies have a, you know, they kind of have a mechanism to kind of make this all kind of connect a little bit. But, you know, if somebody really was, wants to do a 50, 100 cow herd, which is obviously less and less, that's my, my biggest concern. And then, of course, the cost, uh, I'm aware of a project that was done that was over 100, you know, $200,000 five years later, and we have a closure program. So the pit was put in, five years later, they got cost share to close the pit. And I mean, and again, we can't control that, but there should be some obligation. I don't believe there is, and that's a question probably for SCS to have sometime, is there should be some obligation if we're going to stick the money into, you know, securing a pit, that there's some obligation to the landowner that you're going to be doing this for 10 years or something. And then if you don't, and I don't believe there is a mechanism if they, or is there?
Uh, yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, I know for the state cost share, they sign a 10-year contract. So they have to maintain it for 10 years now. I don't know the ins and outs of getting out of that and, and wanting to do a closure in the middle of it. That'd be something for those entities to answer.
And I believe that that is paid for, uh, within the 10 years. But again, that, what I'm looking for is the freeing up some dollars that we can make sure that, I would say that, you know, I'm looking at the, at the 10, uh, 10 to 50. You know, you've got 15 non-compliant, 58 non-compliant, those are less than 100 cow herds. Uh, there's 100, there's, you know, 125 people that aren't compliant, uh, with 100 cows or less. That's the group I'm really concerned about. The big dairies obviously are great. They have more, uh, what do you want to call it? Avenue's potential to help make that all happen. It's those 100 cows and less that unfortunately are, like I said, going to the wayside. And now they're non-compliant, that's what I'm mostly concerned about.
And if I can answer part of that, they're not just non-compliant on the manure storage, correct? This could be on, they built something and didn't get a permit or, right?
Well, um, actually, it's either open lot runoff in these situations or storage.
Yeah.
So.
So it's strictly manure related?
It, it is, correct. It's either runoff or containment issues. And, 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 and some of it, I believe, is also, you know, especially for these smaller farms, Commissioner Bertram, it's, they may not be sure what they want to do going forward. If a family member's wanting to take it over and all that, so do they want to make that investment? So some of them are, are hesitant to, to pull the trigger and make a large investment, which often is meaning adding animals to cash flow it. It's complex.
Becky, if I may, I, I believe that we have Commissioner Clark with us now. Commissioner Clark, are you with us now?
I am.
Oh, good.
I think we should have a pet out of me there because I'm here.
Okay, good. Well, we'll, we'll see if we can, we can include you here in the meeting. Um, we're, we're on the topic right now of one of your favorite topics in, in your district, which is feedlots.
I've done a lot of work in feedlots in the past, yes.
Okay, could you speak a little louder? Otherwise, we'll have the control, uh, folks turn the volume up.
Can you hear me?
A little bit louder.
I think I'm all the way up.
There you go, okay, that's better.
Can you see me? Because I can see myself on the screen.
Uh, we cannot see you, but I think it's a good distance.
Uh, Mr. Chair, once the PowerPoint is pulled down, you'll be able to see Commissioner Clark.
Okay, alright, Becky, go ahead.
Yes, it's a very important topic and I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Bertram's questions.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move on to the other aspect of compliance.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to bring Terrell's picture in until we can see her? Then she'll be with us.
Uh, Mr. Commissioner Bertram, once the PowerPoint is over, then you'll be able to see her.
I'm teasing, oh.
Okay.
Good to hear you, Commissioner Clark.
Um, Mr. Chair, I'm not able to.
I can see her on the team, she's, she's actually here.
Good.
I'm not able to advance the slides anymore for some reason. Um, so if the control room can move it to the next slide, um, which is manure record non-compliance, that's another aspect of compliance that we track and have been for the last 10 years. So in Stearns County, we have about 1,400 feedlots that are state required to register. Of those, the state requires the, the sites that are 100 animal units or more to keep records of their manure, um, where they're putting it, how much it, um, was put down, the dates, et cetera, and the manure samples. So we have 829 sites in Stearns County, um, that are required to keep records. And so that's 60% of the state required registered. And we've reviewed records for 527 of those. Um, so 64% of those, um, 210 are non-compliant, so 40% are non-compliant. Um, this is primarily an education-related thing. There is some cost share available sometimes for nutrient management. Um, but also fertilizer costs help play a role in, in compliance as well. People wanting to make the most of their dollars and get the most out of the nitrogen and the manure. So over time, we are seeing an improvement in that. But, um, it is an ongoing process of education and assistance that we provide. Um, the last slide for feedlots, uh, the MPCA, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, began requiring online feedlot permitting for those in non-delegated counties or that are federally permitted. As you recall, a few years ago, they moved to an online registration process, which we are not, um, pushing on our owners here in Stearns County. Instead, we're sending out the pre-populated form. Um, the online, um, process that the state has does require an email. And we're not, um, seeing that all of our, um, producers or feedlot producers, especially on a once in a four-year registration basis, are into creating an email for that purpose. At any rate, we are, uh, remain involved in the Minnesota Association of County Feedlot Officers, um, active on the board and on the team, many of the teams, and through the AMC Association of Minnesota Counties. Um, MACFO is also seeking an increase in the delegation funding. So as you can see in this slide, currently, the, the program statewide, which is 50 counties that are delegated, receives 1.95 million. Um, we're looking for the increase to 3 million. Um, and the high watermark was back in 2003 at $2.3 million. Next slides are related to the water resource programs. So the One Watershed One Plan program that many of you are aware of. Commissioner Notch, you're sitting on a couple of these, um, policy committees. So the North Fork of the Crow River Watershed is about 17% of the county's land base. It is through the planning phase and in the implementation phase. Um, we're working on a plan update at this point. The Sauk River Watershed is the largest part of this, of Stearns County with 48%. And so that is also in the implementation phase. The Mississippi Saint Cloud Watershed, 12% of the county, is in the planning phase. The last watershed in the county that will become part of the One Watershed One Plan program is the Mississippi River Sartell. We're looking at one to two years out on that program.
Becky, if I may, that program has been going on for a good over a year. Uh, and are, are we, are we going to, are we getting there? Are we, are we going to see it actually become the mindset and that's how we're going to be operating? I, I, it just seems that it, it's been such a long, slow process. Uh, Steve, I, 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 I'm just wondering, are, is there still resistance to change that we're not going to start thinking that way? Or are we going to, uh, finally get there?
Uh, Mr. Chair, it, it is a very involved process. Um, however, the legislature created this, I believe, to make the dollars more evenly distributed and also easier. So entities are not competing for the dollars anymore. So once through the planning phase into the implementation phase, there is a set amount of dollars available to hit those priorities that are laid out. So it does require a lot of time and review, um, but in the end, it's guaranteed money for implementation.
And, and I, I agree with the plan. The, the water has no idea what jurisdiction it runs through. And, and the way that it drains, it, it, it goes nature's course. But we've constructed these political boundaries and then I'll interfere with the flow of the water. And I think that is, was part of the problem. I'm just hoping that this is actually going to be a positive move, but it's been taken such a long time.
I think, um, Mr. Chair, if I can add to that, part of, part of it was first, like the North Fork was an initial.
A pilot.
Pilot project. And so they were developed, you had to develop the whole layout, you know, so it was like kind of a redo or start over. So, you know, Sauk River jumped in afterward, I believe it started in 2018. It took like three years because you have to kind of develop the model and create the format and everything else. Once that part is done, which I think the whole state's going through right now, then this level funding source, each one knows pretty much, you know, biannually, how much they're going to get of base funding, which then, like I'm on the policy, and then you have a technical group. So they'll look at the projects that were put in the plan and say, oh, okay, this one kind of rose to the top this year. So we'd like to fund this improvement. So then, you know, the policy committee reviews it after that. And I guess we kind of agree or not agree. And, and then whoever the, like Sauk River is, the Sauk River Watershed, the Sauk River ones. So they'll, they'll be the ones that implement the plan, that portion of the plan then to get it done.
But I'm just hoping.
So it's just a process of getting the whole state into this one watershed, one plan.
Agreed, but I just hope that we, we get there and then we, we function there. I mean, I was in education for so many years and you got a reading program that starts and people buy into it, you get comfortable and all of a sudden you switch your reading program, your curriculum program, and you go from one model to another. I'm hoping that this model makes sense and that we continue to use it, so. Sorry for interrupting.
Because each entity had to create their own water plan originally, now.
Right.
It's a different model.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it's, it's all watershed-based planning now versus county water planning. So it's moving in the direction of, 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 of a unified water plan regardless of the county and guaranteed dollars. So it does take a lot of time and effort upfront, especially when those entities aren't used to working together and such. Um, but once those, um, documents and legal, um, documents are constructed, as Commissioner Notch said, it, it starts to flow a little better than it did like with the North Fork. It took a while, so.
Alright, let's hope it continues.
Another aspect related to water planning is, um, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency does some monitoring and, um, identifying of, of impaired waters. So this is called the Watershed Restoration and Planning Process, or RAPS. So, um, the North Fork, uh, Crow River Watershed area is currently waiting for MPCA to finalize their RAPS report. The Sauk River Watershed District is waiting for the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, because they are approving, it's also a federal program, so they're approving those impaired waters lists. And then the Mississippi Saint Cloud is currently, the MPCA is currently writing the report. So these RAPS reports are used in the One Watershed One Planning Process to identify key priorities and implementation projects. The next water-related program is the Aquatic Invasive Species Program. So in 2022, we had just over 12,000 inspections of watercraft at 10 accesses and nine water bodies. Eighty, or I'm sorry, 62% of those are upon entry to the water body. And thankfully, 96% of them had the drain plug out. Um, we have 22 AIS surveys that were conducted on 11 lakes and 18 AIS control treatments on. and 18 AIS control treatments on eight lakes. We still have an active, very active committee. They have spent about 580 hours of their time as volunteers in 2022. So they help us, they make recommendations and help us run the program and do some educational efforts as well. I will let you know that for 2023, the vendor that was approved, the only contract that we signed is a significantly higher cost per hour. So we are most likely to see a change in these numbers for 2023. There are going to be fewer inspection hours out there. And the last slide I have for you is just a map of the area of the county showing the areas where there are invasive species. In 2022, there were three new infestations. And this program is not to prevent all new infestations. It's impossible to do that, but it's to help educate and try to prevent some of it. So you can see over time with the graph on the lower left-hand side of this that that increase continues to happen, but hopefully, the rate will be decreasing. Any questions that you have?
Mr. Chairman, those lakes, are they identified, which lakes those are, or did I miss that? I'm sorry.
The Lake Louisa, that would be down in the southeastern part of the county. Grand Lake and then Coronas Lake are the ones with new infestations. Grand and Coronas had zebra mussels that were introduced, and Lake Louisa had Eurasian millfoil.
And then, Mr. Chairman, the 10 lakes that the monitoring's going on.
I don't have those for you today. I can get you that information if you'd like.
I'd like to see that. I'm just curious, what's that based on, size of the lake or?
So-
Usage?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, our program is run in that those lake associations or entities that are looking to use the AIS dollars submit a request for proposals, request for proposal to us. So some of them are for inspection hours, some of them are for control treatments. And so those lakes that are selected are based on the applications that we receive.
So an organization, Mr. Chairman, like the Chain of Lakes, that you have multiple lakes, is that still per lake, or is it the lake association as a whole?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, I believe their application has been submitted per lake. So they've made several applications over the years, and it's not for the entire chain. They're targeted.
And then, Mr. Chairman, you have to give me those 10 lakes and then that slide presentation.
Yep, yeah, and it is in the packet as well.
Mr. Chair.
Is this just informational, or do we need action to approve this plan?
It's just informational. I think Commissioner Clark is trying to come through.
Yes, can you hear? Yes, I was going to say the other piece, oh, my goodness, now I can see my face is very big. That might be helpful for Commissioner Bertram is some of the information back from the AIS Awards Committee. I've been so impressed with how the lake associations really take all of this seriously and are partnering, really in a great partnership with our county.
Becky, you know, since we were talking about animal units, one thing I've always talked about when I meet other commissioners is we're proud of our dairy here in Stearns County. Do we still see numbers that continue to increase as far as herd size, number of animals? Is that still happening?
Mr. Chair, so yeah, even though the number of feedlots that are state-registered is declining, we are not seeing a number decline in the number of animal units or total animal units that are registered. So, and I have, I need to check with the Minnesota Department of Health, or I'm sorry, Ag, regarding the number of dairy farms that are active as far as for dairy inspections and such. I think that has declined, but again, I'm not seeing that the number of animal units is decreasing. So, and you could see from the chart, too, the sites, there are sites that are getting larger.
And that's my understanding, that the herds just continue to be getting larger. The number of farms actually goes down, and we've had the fewest number of farms than maybe we've had in the last 50 to 100 years, but we have more animals than we've ever had producing in Stearns County.
According to the registered numbers, correct.
And I always say we have the happiest cows in the state. And I say they give sweet milk. That's because they're not Vikings fans, they're Johnny fans. That's what makes them happy. Okay. Okay, we'll move on.
I was encouraged that we finally got around to recognizing the reality of consolidation in the agricultural industry. And it took us a while to get there, but good job.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I do have the slide presentation. I just didn't get far enough. I thought I saw it yesterday, and I couldn't find it, but I didn't go far enough down, so you don't need to send that. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Becky Shelley, do you have anything else?
I have nothing else except to say that I will see you on April 18th after this.
Okay, thank you.
Can't wait.
Human Services, Melissa, we've been waiting to see you. We hope you're doing well.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. I am Melissa Huberty. I'm the Human Services Administrator. And we have one item on our regular agenda, and it's D1 on page 62. And I have Mike Poehler with me today, who is the Human Services Director over Gateway Services, which is the Public Assistance Division. And we're here to provide information to the board regarding the unwinding of the public health emergency and the impact on public assistance healthcare beneficiaries in our county. You may have seen news articles in the papers recently, there's been quite a few, and hearing some information at AMC that many Americans may end up without their healthcare coverage in the coming months. And we'd like to give you a brief history of how the public health emergency affected public assistance healthcare and follow that with some projections, challenges, and impacts on our staff as well as our community. So if we do have a slide presentation that does not involve aquatic invasive species, so we'll see if we can pull that up. There we go. And if you could just move it to the second slide. So I'm going to provide a very brief history. Very early in the pandemic, in March of 2020, the family's first Coronavirus Response Act came into existence. And this act had a continuous healthcare coverage requirement in it. And that meant that once a person or a family is eligible for coverage, they will remain covered until the law changed. Simultaneously and as a result of the pandemic, many new people were added to public assistance healthcare programs. So, for example, in Stearns County, we saw a 38% increase in people going on to the program during the pandemic. And we have a number of, many more citizens that actually required to go on to public assistance healthcare as a result of the pandemic, and that they fit under that law. So however, the law did change with the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2022, or 2023, and it was signed into law on December 29th, 2022, so at the end of last year. And one specific outcome of this act is that it ends that continuous healthcare coverage on March 31st of this year. And as a result, nearly everyone who is on public assistance healthcare needs to go through a redetermination process. As you can imagine, redetermination processes through governments is never easy or straightforward. And that means that we have a lot of citizens who have, like, the highest needs. Not all of us are excellent at completing our paperwork, even when we don't have a lot of high needs. But we're taking our most impoverished citizens who have a lot of high needs and then putting them through a fairly arduous redetermination process in order for them to maintain healthcare coverage. So I have here to discuss the impacts of this, Mr. Poehler, who will review how this will likely affect our community in Stearns County.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. I'm going to start with some high-level case numbers, just in general. The national and statewide increase in public assistance healthcare cases was 28% during the continuous coverage period. As Melissa previously mentioned, Stearns County saw a 38% increase during the same time period. Stearns County currently has 22,380 public healthcare cases active that were responsible for maintaining eligibility for. Overall, this has a direct effect on 41,251 people within the county. So essentially, one in four people you know and see every day are in need of some sort of healthcare assistance. Some projections. The Minnesota Department of Human Services is estimating that 15% to 25% of active healthcare cases will disenroll, which means they're going to fall off of assistance as the renewal process is worked through over the next year. Of those losing coverage, we foresee some common scenarios. Individuals who may have had a job change and now have a better employer-provided healthcare is one scenario. This is one that we're looking forward to celebrating. We're expecting some lost coverage due to incorrect addresses. DHS is currently running an address update campaign statewide to help mitigate the issue. We feel maybe our largest obstacle to residents losing healthcare coverage is the renewal process itself. The form being sent to people is 27 pages long and requires a lot of information.
And it's in paper format.
Correct, yep. If the forms are not turned in promptly, people may lose coverage just due to that and have to reapply.
I'm going to interrupt. I guess I see that perhaps that's going to be a heck of a stumbling block, that people that don't have issues right now, they're going to say, I'm not going to do this. And then, of course, when they have problems, they won't be available for receiving services, correct?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, that is exactly correct, and that is why we are here today to inform the board about this. And it's not just a Stearns County problem, this is a statewide problem. So every county in Minnesota will be experiencing this.
And, Mr. Chairman, was that the State Department of Health that did that, or who did that? Required this recertification in this 27-page form?
Well, normal process, it would be from the, sorry, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chair Commissioner. It would be the federal law down past through the state. So the, basically, with the continuous coverage requirement that was previously in, it just stopped that process from happening, so it put a pause on for essentially for three years. So now we're picking that back up.
And, Mr. Chair Commissioners, normally, it is not easy to get on public assistance programs. So, but it was paused, basically paused during the pandemic. And now with the new act going into place at the end of December, we're back into regular business.
Oh, I apologize. This churn, basically as we're describing it, will be very resource-intensive, obviously, at the county level, as we need to touch nearly all 22,000 cases, sometimes more than once. We'll move on to some challenges. Talking with county partners across the state, we realize that it's improbable that we'll be able to keep up with the sheer volume of renewals coming due each month. Some of the county's largest challenges to get through the workload will be simply more enrollees, more effort to complete each renewal due to the churn we described in the previous slide. Many interactions will be needed to get people to the right place. Workforce issues, hiring and training new staff, training staff hired during the public health emergency that have never seen a renewal, retraining experienced staff that have to learn the new renewal process. Currently, there are no online text or email functionalities to manage eligibility, so this will be a 27-page paper process to start with. There are plans in the works at the state level to have an online system to allow for submission of some of this stuff. Unlikely to be prompt.
And just in my opinion, many people that are in need maybe don't have the skills necessarily to complete the online. They oftentimes need in help, attention, you know, face-to-face. I hope we can provide that.
That's correct.
All right. As you can imagine, loss of coverage creates increases in uncompensated care throughout the system. Gaps in coverage will create barriers to accessing services such as prescription drugs, care to manage chronic conditions, immunizations, preventive screening, mental health and substance abuse disorder treatment, just to name a few. Due to these gaps, people will be forced to seek out the most expensive care, such as the emergency room instead of taking preventive measures. That's not only expensive for the taxpayers, it's also devastating for the families. Staff is being impacted. We have a great group of people working hard, excuse me, to make sure those in need are being helped. They feel a lot of pressure to make sure that the help is provided. The mental health and well-being of staff is very much a concern as the demand for service increases. Currently, we're not fully staffed, although we continue to work with HR to find quality additions to the team. I would like to add a plug to HR here, as they've been great to work with throughout. So especially knowing that they are seeing a large volume of hiring as well. Workforce issues are a struggle across the nation. Having said all that, we also want you to know that we are taking every effort to be creative and innovative, making solutions to make the daily work as efficient as possible. We're integrating and cross-training throughout the division on a larger scale than we ever have in the past. And I do want to take this opportunity to give kudos to the Gateway Services Division. They're doing exceptional work every day, and they definitely deserve admiration, especially during this unprecedented work volume. The Community Connector Unit in the Public Health Division have been and continue to be a great resource for both clients and department staff. We work with many community partners. One example to share, we recently met with the Navigators from Mid-Missouri Legal Aid to share expectations about how the healthcare renewal process is going to affect how we work together. We plan to implement any workflow improvements found with other partners. And to your point, Mr. Chair, as far as people in the community, there's many navigators across the state, and that is their primary job. And so working with our partners in the community to make sure that the boots on the ground and helping people where they're at in some of those gaps. Flexibility and empathy for our citizens and staff going through this process is of utmost importance. We want to be the best employer we can, as that translates to providing the best possible service to the residents of Stearns County as it aligns with their mission, vision, and values. Even with all the innovation and effort, people will be losing healthcare coverage. You may hear from constituents while in the community or receive phone calls. Our mission is to work as diligently as possible to make sure that we maintain healthcare coverage for all of those who are eligible and to connect those who may be ineligible but still need help with other coverage options. And again, this is information that we're providing to the board today, so you're aware of the issues. And we are available for questions, comments.
Yeah, and, Mr. Chair Commissioners, I would just add that we're also working with the legislature to help on that end as well. Maybe they'll perhaps pass a grace period where they don't have people just fall off, because we haven't been doing that for three years. So presumably, it would be fine to put a grace period in here for a number of months so counties can catch up on these cases. Because short of adding a tremendously large workforce to do this, which of course isn't even there, even if we were going to add a large number of workforce to this effort, we can't hire that many. So we're looking also to get some support from the legislature, and they've been warm towards us, so we'll see what happens.
Okay. Melissa, I'm very concerned about this. And just our past experiences, you know, occasionally, we all have members in the community that have special needs and they're having difficulty, oftentimes they're having difficulty working through the system, because each individual is unique and has different characteristics, and they may be looking the wrong avenue to how to find the assistance. But I see this as a potential for us to have great problems, and that all of us are going to probably be hearing from constituents. You know, what is going to be our best option when we get that call? Do we send it on to your office to make sure that you're aware of it, they contacted us?
Correct. Mr. Chair, that would be probably the best avenue. It's been working pretty well that way so far. There will be an increase probably, like we said, there'll be, people will be falling off healthcare even under anybody's best intentions. We do have Case Aid connectors in the Public Health Division that have been helping out with the really complex cases, so we address those in a slightly different manner. The rest of them, many of the calls that you do get, sometimes constituents have, it's an arduous process, so they don't always get all of the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. And we're going back and forth, back and forth, to try to get the right paperwork and to try to get the right documents. And then, of course, when they do finally send it in, then they're expecting, you know, that minute that something might happen sometimes. And of course, there's a long line of people who have, who might be waiting. So that's why it's really important that the legislature provide a grace period. It doesn't help anyone, including especially the taxpayer, to throw people off healthcare, because that's all uncompensated care that goes right to the tax base anyway.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. The 38% that you saw increase during COVID, had you ever seen an influx like that before?
No. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, I believe, working with my supervisors, the year prior to COVID, I think we saw an 8% increase for one year, so higher than normal.
And my point is, Mr. Chairman, obviously, it's skewed because there are so many more at it. Now it's going the other way, so it kind of skews it a little bit probably to some point. You say you're going to contact the legislator. The legislature is, what about federal? If the federal folks are doing this, or is it, that's my question earlier. Is it the state that's doing this, or is it the federal?
Mr. Chair Commissioner Bertram, it's actually, it starts at CMS, the Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services, coming down through Minnesota Department of Human Services. So it's federal law applied by the state. So there are some nuances at the state level, at each state level, but it's federal law.
Because it's kind of, it's kind of interesting, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that this is happening, because the rhetoric we hear in both levels are that something like this wouldn't happen. So it's kind of ironic that it is happening and then thrown down to us. What percentage, and I kind of know this, but for the public, what percentage of what you do is mandated by federal and state program? I mean, our limitation, we have no control over how much of everything that happens in human services.
Mr. Chair? Oh, way higher, didn't you say 70? No, it's up in, it's in the 90s. Nearly all of what we do.
And again, I share that with people, that it's huge, that, and it gets thrown on us, and we have to do it. And what I really feel sorry for when we're at the Association of Minnesota Counties, you look across that room, there's people there representing counties that are 2,500, 3,000 population. They're under the same requirement that we are. Obviously, we have more people, but it hurts them just as bad or worse, because they have more limited resources. You said 22,000 plus are active, affecting 41,000 individuals. I would assume the 18,000 difference is children predominantly?
Children, partners.
Yes, correct.
Spouses are also, or is it individual? If you're a spouse, are you on a program like that together, or is it two separate? Or both?
Mr. Chair Commissioner Bertram, I'd say, I'd say most of that would probably be families. And then I'm getting well outside the scope of my understanding of, there's mixed household, not income, but mixed household coverages. There's many levels of coverage as well, from straight MA, from MinSure, public, private partnership, there's just a lot of different levels, so.
And then you said 15 to 25% will fall off. The, you know, I'm a, I try to be an optimistic person, so you make lemonade with lemons. Are you, is any part of your program, so they don't qualify or that they can't get back on? A lot of people are looking for employment. Do you help try to connect the dots of saying, okay, there won't be any government assistance for you? But do you help connect them with some jobs that would provide them some healthcare? Want an income and healthcare, or don't you get into that at all?
Mr. Chair Commissioner, we do have contracts, we do have contracts actually to do up for RFP this year to help people who are impoverished to get unemployment. At any given time in Stearns County, we have around 33,000 people on public assistance at any given time, and almost nearly all of them are employed. The problem is they're underemployed, so they can't afford all childcare, healthcare, you know, transportation, all these things. Of the people that are not employed, typically those folks are very disabled with either mental health or physical health issues, so.
And, and Mr. Chairman, again, for those that can be employed, if we can help connect them to higher level employment.
Yes.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer and I serve in the Career Solution Joint Powers Board, you know, connections like that. I hope we try to.
We do.
Offer that, because again, the best scenario in my world is if you're not going to get public assistance or you don't need public assistance, if you can get a better job and you can provide those services, care for yourself, ultimately, then you don't have to deal with them.
Correct.
And they're going to be better off long term.
That would be my ideal, yes, to work our way out of a job, yes. That'd be perfect.
I don't think you're going to have to worry about that unfortunately.
I try.
Yeah, so. Mr. Chair, Melissa and Mike, so do you know, you just referenced the 33,000. Is that percentage-wise, kind of, you see that level throughout Minnesota? Or is it, I mean, is that kind of average per county, or?
I don't know that I know the answer to that question.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Notch, I think we generalize at the poverty level. So those below the poverty level, and that kind of mirrors that. But that's a generalization.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair, just so you know, Commissioner Clark was.
Hello, go ahead, Terrell.
Thank you, whoops, I have to get up really loud again. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, a couple of things, I really do appreciate all the work staff's doing, in particular with partnerships. As we were, you were talking about the states having some flexibility. Just to clarify, that's why the advocacy with the legislature is so important, so that we have enough time and people have enough time to get their appropriate paperwork in, have our community partners, be able to help connect back towards us. And then considering, for those who may not know in the public, I think all of our board members do know, is that if somebody has a healthcare problem and they don't have health insurance, and particularly with Centra Care, one of the first things that happens is they try to help people get qualified. So think about how many people were sick, particularly at the beginning of COVID. Many people had help getting on MA. And then if they get a job, but it doesn't have healthcare, then their best hope really is, is to get on Minnesota Care or get, have their healthcare through the market. So when you were talking about it being complicated, it really is. As I think about all the seniors who maybe have had some additional health needs that have had a spend out, and they may have some questions about this. So the work we also do with the Council on Aging, and Commissioner Lenzmeyer and I serve on that board, it's also really important. So mostly comments, but we do have some ability as a state, one, to determine what the length of time to get through this process is. And then, two, as a county, clearly how we treat people is so important. So again, want to appreciate the work your staff is doing.
Okay, thank you. I've got a question, is this going to be catastrophic to the emergency room? I mean, if, if these policies are just not there anymore, are, are we going to immediately be embalmed by people just going to the emergency room and that's how they're going to expect to be treated?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I believe that is what happens, and I believe the hospitals are quite concerned about this as well. However, as we often do with healthcare, we wait till the last minute. So I don't know that it'll happen immediately in the next months, but it would presumably, we will, every county will be working on getting on top of these redeterminations as best we can, and this too shall pass at some point. We will get on the other side, but I think it'll take at least a year, at least a year, every month doing redeterminations before we get kind of over that hump that Commissioner Bertram was talking about with the substantial increase in the number of people that became eligible during the pandemic. Or I assume this too shall pass, I should say. I'll be back in a year to give you an update.
Anything else?
No.
And this is information only as well?
This is just information only for the board.
Good, well, thank you much. You have any else, anything else on your agenda?
Unless you have something for me.
The last question would be, Mr. Chairman, Mike, is the first experience with the board, is it okay for you?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, it was a fantastic experience.
He passed his probation today, so he's a permanent employee, so we should have done this yesterday.
Yes, welcome, welcome to our world.
Thank you so much.
We got happy cows. Right now, we're, I believe we're scheduled for a break, but Mike, how much will your administration take?
Mr. Chair, we're near the end, because the Fair Board is not going to be present, so.
Okay.
There was a, I think, a misunderstanding about what time we were meeting.
Okay.
So we'll schedule them for an upcoming meeting.
Okay, then if they're not on, we've got issues by Commissioners, I don't see any real need for us to go on to a break. Are you good with that, unless anybody else has something else, then we'll go with it. Commissioner Clark, we're going to start with you, long distance, issues by Commissioner.
I was going to say, it might be the hardest one to really get through. I suppose the main thing for the public concern would be continuing to make sure that we are communicating with our legislators, even in this meeting. We heard several that they really have that are impacting our citizens right now. And so let's continue the work that we're doing, and I think that's it right now, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, enjoy your time.
Oh, the little one is so sweet. I'm really glad we can get a chance to do that, thank you.
Good. Commissioner Notch?
Yeah, I just maybe have one comment. Becky and I have been communicating in the last week or so. Had this incident come up in my district where, you know, talking about manure stockpile, manure facilities, where whether it was intentional, I don't believe it was, but an issue came up where, you know, this time of year, a lot of times, Pen pack manure, which, you know, is straw bedded, not liquid, gets hauled by truck and, you know, stored on the end of a field. And then, you know, as the snow melts down, they can drive in the field, they spread the manure. Well, there was an incident that came, came up in my district where it's a rural residential property that's been there as long as I can remember. And a farmer that owns the land next door purchased this bulk manure and had it dumped within, well, about 100 feet of their well and probably less than 200 feet from their home. So when they sit in their living room, you know, when they look out and they see this pile of manure sitting in the end of the field. And, you know, granted, the county has been helping, you know, I've been discussions with the residents and, you know, we have ordinances, you know, it says you got to have it 700 feet back. And it's probably an unfortunate situation, but in defense of the homeowner, it's like, so we need to get a well sample to make sure we know what our baseline is in case it does get contaminated down the road. We can say at the beginning it wasn't, but now it is. It's like everything has fallen on them. There is an agreement that the farmer said, you know, I'll have it moved in three weeks. While we're in spring, you know, it's heating up. And our ordinance states the setbacks and all this stuff. But yet, in this case, it seems like all the effort has to fall on that homeowner to try and, you know, rectify it. I mean, the county does have a work plan with the farmer to get it, you know, moved or spread. But sometimes I think, and I don't want to be, you know, the heavy hand, or right away you got to have a fine, but, you know, if your septic isn't done in a certain amount of time, granted, this is a different situation. You know, it goes to the court and they can, you know, get this forcibly done. And this is probably just not being neighborly, but, you know, we have, there's an agreement that he can move it, but it really doesn't help the people that live there. You know, because it's an agreement that farmer's going to move it in three weeks. And my thinking was, we, the owner should have probably been on the farmer to say, okay, it all got piled there in a day, you know, with the trucks hauling. You know, you have less than a week, move it back. Because even a homeowner said, if they'd have just pushed it back 200 feet, it would have been behind my shed, and I wouldn't even have seen it. And of course, with prevailing winds, northwest, southeast, obviously comes right into their yard, plus the grandkids' swing sets, like, you know, I mean, they could throw a rock on the pile. You know, and it's just kind of an unfortunate situation, but yet, hopefully it's just a one-time deal. But, you know, it's a situation sometimes where I think it shouldn't be on the people that live there and have to deal with it now. You know, maybe it should have been, okay, you have, you know, so many days, please just move it now. But again, you know, I've been talking with environmental services and there is a plan, but unfortunately, it doesn't help the people that live there, because they're having to deal with it. So, you know, maybe down the road when we talk about ordinances, maybe, you know, if a case like this ever comes up again, you know, in our ordinance, maybe we say, okay, if it's a violation of the ordinance, you have, you know, X many hours to move it, or you have a fine of $100 a day or something. Otherwise, if there's no meter, you know, like, there's no, what's the incentive for this farmer to really move it? If there's no penalty, if there's, you know, you have an agreement, but it's very restrictive as to what the county can do besides putting something against their title.
I'm just thinking the situation, just common sense and communication.
You know, Becky has called me, you know, the farmer said on Friday he'd have it moved, start moving it yesterday, but I think with the snow in the morning, but today they should be moving it, but it's been since President's Day. You know, so, that's just an unfortunate thing, and I just thought it, you know, it should be brought forward, that maybe when we look at ordinances, maybe sometimes we have to put, you know, not that I want to put a penalty or something on it, but if we're going to have ordinance and there's really no teeth in it, is it effective, do we even need the ordinance?
Anything else?
Nope.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Cows are still happy though.
The cows are happy though, okay, good. That's why I like them.
The, the answer to a happy life isn't always more regulation. I think we had a couple of examples of that this morning. And the, the best way to deal with it is to at least talk it through here at, at the board. So the public is aware that we're aware that these things take place. And while we tried to come up with the least intrusive solutions in these cases, it's challenging to make that happen. So I guess the only observation I'd make is we all need to share the pain. Thanks, folks.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Notch, that really brings up a good, I mean, who'd have thought of that? What about the stockpiling? And Shelley can answer this some other time, but what about the stockpiling? Because with the larger dairies and the manure management plans, and they have that, have additional, and a lot of the turkey, chicken litter, I mean, you see piles popping up all over the place. I assume that's not a problem, as long as it's setback and stuff. But Shelley can answer that with us some other time. But it just brings up, again, being proactive, just information. You know, when you do these manure management plans and everything, to say, by the way, if you're stockpiling, make sure that you're, you know, because again, top of mind, people, I'm sure the guy that did that didn't just didn't think.
Well, here's, part of the issue is, he doesn't have cattle, you know, on his farm. You know, he's basically, his son is crop farming all this land for, you know, renting it from his dad. So, you know, if you're a feedlot, you kind of know the setbacks and stuff like that. And not necessarily all crop farmers know that part of the equation. So when they buy this manure or just get it for free and stockpile it, you know, it could have been totally unintentional, because he didn't know that, I mean, neighborly, he'd say, hmm, I wouldn't want to buy in my house, but, you know, not being a feedlot, probably didn't know that, well, you got to have it 700 feet back from a dwelling.
But even telling the feedlot people, if you sell your manure, make sure that who buys it understands what they can do and what they can't do. Two things, Mr. Chairman, Mike and you and I talked, and we forgot to bring that up under Shelley's point, the interview for the Tri-County Waste Commission Director. You asked Lee and I if one of us could do the interview, and we asked why, and you said, well, you can't make the date. The board appointed Commissioner Persky to be on the interview committee. I'd say change the date. I mean, applicants, you know, the board comes first, three boards, you know, Benton, Sherburne, Stearns, then the applicants, so I'm sure they'll make themselves available. But I'd suggest we do a duty poll between Commissioner Persky and the other two members, and then redo the.
We have an interview on Friday for the Tri-County position that's open. I was on the review committee. I have a human trafficking meeting, which I was unable to attend last month, and I really certainly would like to be able to attend this month. So there's a conflict there, and again, those interviews are scheduled for, for Friday. Shelley, I think you.
Mr. Chair, the issue is not can we reschedule something? Yep, we could always reschedule stuff, however, I often lose candidates. And I've got two candidates and the potential to lose another one. I lost the last one because it took so long. This is my issue, I have a very difficult position to fill. We have two applicants. You don't, I mean, I'm on the interview panel, I'm there, I'm a part of it, I'm representing. I think we have two other members there available who have been, Ed Pop has been a part of things for a long time. And then we have a new member, Greg Felber from Sherburne. So we do have those members, if you'd like to move forward. But it's, I'm more concerned about losing the candidates again.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if we made it next week, I can't believe the last candidate withdrew. So, I mean, that still can happen. And then I asked for the link yesterday, and you gave that to me.
Yep.
Are they still open yet? Because somebody was going to apply.
They're not open. It's, it's, I mean, again, it'll be open until it's filled, they might leave it up there. But I'm, we've got the interviews, we've scheduled, and that's based on a date that I get from HR. We go through a process. I have to do it on the 10th, because I am not available for the next month after that. That's why I'm trying to get. That's why I'm trying to get this accomplished.
That's a different issue then, and it's Friday?
Yeah.
So I guess the board would have to re.
Well, we, exactly, exactly. Exactly, I mean, you have two, two options. Well, the obvious one is to appoint someone else. That's what, that's what we asked all counties to do, or work with the other counties and move the date. But, I mean, obviously, those are the two things you can do.
Well, one thing that's, that's here, though, it's, it's a virtual meeting. And so we're not looking at in person. So, I mean, I, I would think that if it's just two candidates, that we maybe could find a, a time that we could be available. I, I don't know.
For you, you mean?
For, for myself, yeah, right. And then for Commissioner Johnson, also, is that, he's out of, out of the area.
It's Commissioner Pop, she said.
Correct, but he's substituting for Commissioner Johnson. So otherwise, if we had another time, perhaps Commissioner Johnson could have participated, so.
And the unfortunate part with that is Commissioner Johnson has been involved with the interview, so he's got some depth of knowledge of that.
You know, we, by all means, we could move it up to Thursday if that would work.
Okay, and I appreciate this, but actually, it's not my area. I'm not the person who does the recruiting and I'm not the person who sets the interviews. I just show up at the time. I can certainly ask HR, but typically what happens with our applicants is they are working jobs and then they have to address, one of our applicants is in, in New York. So I know they're working and doing other things. So I cannot say if we, when and how we change the dates. So I, I could just express, there's a concern. I can certainly do it with two, two members, and that is fine. I, I, I think that's another option. I, I'd like to get moving forward.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't think that we're looking for two members, we're looking, we'll, we'll have three members. You asked if Lee or I would do it, I certainly would participate. I think we want three commissioners, and Shelley. So that's not the issue. The issue is we appointed you. So if we can't change it, then in a second, Plan B, you ask Lee and I, I would certainly be willing to do it, or if you want to do it, I, I don't care. Last meeting.
You know it better than the subject area.
If we want a Plan B, I guess I'd try to make my, I don't know what time it is, but I'd try to make myself available.
We have, there's interviews at nine and 10. Let's do that, let's, we'll try to, we'll try to move it. And if that doesn't work, then we'll leave it the same and we'll have an alternative.
But I need to know as soon as I can when it would be hypothetically or potentially, so I can, I have a job too, so I have to work on it too.
Well, it would be if we can't get it moved, so what time, when is it?
Nine and 10. I have a, there's a nine o'clock and a 10 o'clock for the two applicants. And I will check and talk with HR again.
Okay, and, and just, in the future.
Well, yeah, it's not only their schedules, it's the other county commissioners' schedules too, so. But hopefully, we can make it work.
Right, and but in, in the future, to avoid this, if we get options in ahead of time instead of being told this is when it is, you know, that, that can help, because we may be able to adjust some meeting times or find a preference where all people are available, so.
Duty polls are great.
Mr. Chair.
I do have one more thing.
I was just gonna, I thought at the last meeting, we kind of gave you the, like, if you couldn't be there, you could pick somebody. Didn't we say that at the last meeting?
Commissioner Notch, I'm not sure about that.
I, I was thinking that we did that, so.
I, I didn't get that, but we certainly, it sounds like we're flexible, so.
That's what we'll do.
Commissioner Bertram.
And then the last item would be, I sent an email that Jody is still here yet, and Mike, about the XL Energy. Russ Miller, a constituent from Main Prairie, had emailed me and I shared that email with Mike and Jody. XL is doing this power line route deal through.
Yeah, I think we each have.
Yep. And, and Russ brought up a legitimate point. I mean, I saw it, and, you know, I'm pretty proactive and, but you see that stuff and you think, well, the PUC never has turned down a rate increase that XL requested. And PUC never, what they do is they, they ask for 50 cents and then they give them 35 cent. XL knows before they go through that hearing, that's what's going to happen. Same thing with the route. PUC is not going to deny the route. However, Russ brought up a good point that it's going through county right of way or along right of way. Did I understand that right? And I, you'd know that better than I, Jody or you. But he said, shouldn't we at least at some point have XL kind of share with us? He, he wanted to go run to the public hearings that they have. And again, I've been to these, you go to these public hearings and you know the outcome before you even sit down. But it was a snowstorm, so he couldn't attend that one. And then the next one, I don't know what it was, but again, he, his point, I think, was legitimate in that if it's a crossing the Stearns County, should we not at least somehow, other than just a postcard, be shared something? If it's, especially if it's in our right of way. And again, I maybe got that wrong, but it's somewhere like it's in our right of way.
Oh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, yeah, and, and I think that is the normal procedure is we get notified. Obviously, our county engineer gets notified if it's something in the right of way. And I don't, Jody, if you want to help, help here and make a comment of what we typically do. But yeah, the issue that, the reason it comes to us is because they're using our right of way and not, not, well.
And generally, our only control is if they are placing structures within our right of way, where those structures go, and if they're crossing, how high those wires need to be. We have very little influence on the actual placement of the overall line through the county, just what can and can't be done within our rights of way.
Is it, Mr. Chairman, Mike or Jody, is it strictly in county right of way, or is it some of a township road?
I would imagine, I haven't looked at the plans in great detail, but I would imagine it crosses state highways, township roads, city streets, depending. And I'd have to look a little bit more closely at the overall route. Generally, like I said, we get much more involved when it comes down to the permitting process.
So, Mr. Chairman, Mike, Jody, Commissioners, would it be appropriate to have them come to the next meeting and explain where it is? If, if nothing else, to potentially give it a public forum for people to share something? Not a public hearing on the route or anything, but it is affecting, if it's a, it, it would kind of be on the route, if it'd be on a township road within the county or in the county road that someone might have a problem with, shouldn't we hear that? And shouldn't we kind of help them, the residents, get that message to XL? And the only way I can see doing that is by bringing them before us.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, I, I mean, if the board would want to hear more from XL, right, XL Energy about this, I'm sure they would be happy to do that. That's why they sent us all the notices, so that we're in the know and we can, and we can ask questions if we want to. As we've said, I don't think we're going to have much to say about the actual route. But if you want to know more, I'm, I'm certain that somebody like Mark would be willing to come and give a presentation.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the other thing would be is, again, it's one of those things that I, I don't know how many people pay attention to this. It would at least bring it to a higher attention level from folks, because what's going to happen is probably people are going to see what's going on, even though they got the postcard, they got the notice. But at least if they did come before us, it would bring it to a higher level of attention. And there could be at least some input if somebody wanted to. I, I don't think it would hurt. But Mr. Miller brought that up, and I think it's a good point. So I thought I'd bring that up. And I don't know if we have to formally decide that, or.
I mean, if there's consensus that you'd like to hear more, we can, certainly, we can arrange it.
Is it, is that, you're talking to transmission, different routes that they're proposing? I, I know we have, each one of us has a card in the back with all the routes on it.
Yep.
And I'm assuming it's going to work like CapEx, where they're going to hold, I mean, it's probably a couple of year process to bet which, because if you look on that little map that we each have back there, their, their routes are, I mean, it's like a jigsaw puzzle. There's a lot of them.
And, Mr. Chair, I can certainly reach out to Mark at XL to see if they can do a presentation. And as Commissioner Notch stated, it's generally a lengthy process, so I would want to give him the option of one of the next couple of board meetings, if that's acceptable to the board.
As long as there's no timeline.
Okay, Jody, stay there at the podium. Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, and, because I, I do have a couple of items here and you're in, in one of those, and that's relating to the J-Turn out by Belclaire Acres. We are going to be submitting a request to that for the congressional request through Tom Emmer's office.
The Highway 23 Coalition is submitting a congressionally-directed spending or community priority funding request to Congressman Emmer's office. And they have asked the county, of course, for a letter of support, being that the intersection of Highway 23 and Belclaire Drive within White Park is in Stearns County. It's one of the Coalition's top priorities in their shortlist. So they've asked for a letter of support on that particular project. I did reach out to the Highway 23 Coalition's Projects Committee to inform them that MnDOT feels there's a good chance they could get highway safety improvement programming to construct that within the next five years. They did have some concerns about their own resources to deliver that project, or at least have the funding authorized by September 30th of 2024. So I did not hear back, aside from a couple of comments from Commissioner Bertram and another member of that Projects Committee. So assuming it's going to move forward, we asked Commissioner Persky as the board chair to sign a letter of support for that application. I don't believe that Stearns County should provide the engineering, should the Coalition be fortunate enough to get that congressionally-directed spending, excuse me. However, I know the question was posed, if it's a county priority, should the county be willing to pick up that engineering expense if MnDOT cannot or won't? And not that we really need action, this could be decided and discussed in more detail at a later date, but at this point, we have asked, on behalf of the Coalition, ask Commissioner Persky to sign a letter of support for the application.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as Chair of the Highway 23 Coalition, I did make some of those comments. Quite frankly, the board has routine and engineered to help prep these applications. We've never, we, we have no financial way of supporting, doing the engineering. And we've got, what, four, three projects in three different counties that we're pursuing, one which is this Belclaire Acre one. We certainly are asking and have gotten approval from the other counties to do the engineering for their project. So, I mean, the, the expectation is, because it is a priority for Stearns County, the expectation would be that we do provide the engineering if we get the funding. Now, what I don't know, and we'll have to talk about this at our board meeting on the 22nd, the Coalition Board Meeting, do we pursue dual funding? I feel confident when you say the chances that we're going to get the funding are pretty good. However, I always like to have a Plan B in case we don't. So we have to decide, does it hurt the project if we do apply for it? If you think you're going to get it, but what if you don't get it and then we didn't apply, where it's a missed opportunity? So I think that's why you're not hearing from the entire board, we just don't know. And I don't know if you wanted to zoom in on our meeting on the 22nd. You could, if you felt, or talk to Ashley and relay it through her, or however you want to do it. But we, we quite frankly, don't know what we should do. That's why you're not hearing more comments.
And my concern is that we go ahead and we apply to, to get it. We get it, and then we find out that MnDOT would go ahead and fund it under their program, and then we have to turn, turn down the one that we get through the, through the congressional request. I think that's the quandary.
So, and I, I know that the MnDOT District Traffic Office is going to submit it again for highway safety improvement program funding, and that would be funded at 90%. It's a federal safety grant. And then it would, if they're successful, which we all believe there is a good chance, it would be delivered in 2027 or 2028, I can't remember the exact year. So, I mean, again, it does not hurt to ask. We've been very fortunate in this area to get those awards the last two years for county-specific projects. So that may impact whether or not this area can get additional road and bridge funding. We don't know. But again, I certainly don't have an issue with submitting that application. They're due this Friday, that's the timeliness of this. And then we can just continue to have those discussions as we move on, if that's something that the board is comfortable with. And again, I'm not really asking for action, more so consensus that we're doing the right thing.
To help the board, Mr. Chairman, Jody, do you, would it hurt if we do move, move forward with the application? Would it hurt the potential of MnDOT doing it, do you think?
Of MnDOT funding the engineering?
Well, funding the project in its entirety.
I, I don't think it would long-term hurt if we are applying. They certainly appreciate, although MnDOT in general takes a stance that they would prefer to determine their own program, they certainly are not going to argue with outside agencies bringing funding in to make improvements on their system.
And, Mr. Chairman, Jody, and members, I have to remind them of that all the time. The Four Lane Highway from Richmond to Painesville, and from Painesville to New London, was on their radar for 25 years from now, and they were not going to do it until then. Well, we got the 105 million, the Coalition did, and they're doing it right now. So we can't, you know, they have a different timeframe. That's not our timeframe, we're, it's more urgent for us. When I say us, the Coalition and Stearns County, and the counties affected by 23. So maybe for now, again, that, that's helpful, because I'll share with the board, probably, the Coalition Board, that we will move forward with the funding. And then if nothing else, but I, I don't think it would hurt our, our relationship with MnDOT if they said, okay, we got the funding. You'd think they'd get the funding before we would, but if they got the funding and we got the funding, well, obviously, we'd say, well, then we're going to withdraw our funding request, because you've got it, you're, you're going to cover it. Or is it, is that too simplistic?
So the H-SIP application timeline, generally, they would apply for it in November, this coming November, and the next solicitation. And then they would find out probably in February. So the timing of the appropriations bill getting passed is somewhat up in the air. Ideally, you have that happen, that would happen this fall, ideally. So if we found out we actually got the funding, I don't think we would want to give the federal congressionally-directed spending money back if we were given that award. So we would just have to work with MnDOT then to deliver that project, so the money could be obligated by September 30th of 2024.
And, Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate for us to ask MnDOT then at that point, for them to do the engineering, saying, well, we got the money, you wanted the project.
We would certainly plan on asking, yes.
So, I mean, again, that, it's, it's, this is a little complicated, but it's good news, because we double our chances of potentially getting the project fund. And again, we intentionally went in three different districts, three different congressional districts, to apply for three different specific projects to increase our chances. We're going to be making three applications.
And related to that, Commissioner Persky asked me to draft a letter of support for the Foley-Tomora feasibility study as well. So I did draft two letters of support for his signature. And again, we felt this didn't need board action, because the Highway 23 improvements are on our legislative priorities. So as an informational item, there are letters of support to both Congressman Emmer and Congressman Staber for that Foley-Tomora feasibility study, simply because that section of highway does impact Stearns County residents and then people who also visit Stearns County.
Thank you, Jody. Anything else? Okay, then I've, I've got one other item on issues, and that is, I got a flyer or a request to participate in a cleanup on the mighty Mississippi River. And this goes back, actually, to AMC, a meeting in the fall. And there's a group, especially around the Red Wing area, Good Hugh County area, that's, you know, promoting cleanup along the Mississippi. And there's a number of groups along there. They were just asking if we want to participate with a cleanup day somewhere between April 15th and May 15th. And I said I would bring it to the board, because I thought it was a good idea maybe to participate. I've also invited Benton County to participate with us. It's something they've been doing annually. I would like to see if we could at least try something out. Approach the park board maybe tomorrow, or, yeah, tomorrow night. We have a park board, meaning that we may do something relating to the river property north of Sartell Dam all the way up, and do some type of collection perhaps at the park. So just inform you that that's what we're doing, and I would hope there's no opposition to cleaning up the Mississippi. But you can all feel good as being part of that.
Mr. Chair, yeah, and I, and I did funnel that over to Ben, so that the park commission would talk about that. But just as you're saying that now, it occurs to me, I, I don't know if the, like, the City of Saint Cloud or any of the, or City of Sartell, any, any of them have been invited to participate or not.
No, I think this, this was a county challenge to start with, and that, and that's one thing, Dr. Williams, is that if, you know, if it works successful, you know, working out from the park areas being the location, maybe then we involve Sauk Rapids and the City of Saint Cloud following urine down the river, so that there are more people. But it's better to start out with shorter steps and see, maybe we can get the Boy Scouts or Lions Group also to help with the cleanup and clean up our parks as well. So anyway, just for information that, that's moving forward, so. Okay? Now, that's all I have, unless anybody's had any thoughts flying in their head in the last few minutes. If not, we'll go. If not, we'll go ahead, and we'll adjourn the meeting for today.